Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Commission for Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. Silence all our cell phones, please join me in silencing your cellphone. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hartman.
Present.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner McGurk.
Here.
Mayor Cleveland.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now Police Department Senior Chaplain Tom Personal will give the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, as with gratitude again, we thank you for this wonderful blessing to live in this community, Lord. We're so thankful and blessed that we do. Lord, I pray that you'll direct that storm away from our community and away from the state if possible, Lord, and protect us from any damage in upcoming days. And Lord, lastly, I pray that you'll protect these commissioners and all these city officials here in front of us, Lord. We thank them for their service and ask that you give them the knowledge, wisdom, and discernment to carry out their duties, Lord, and make the decisions that would mostly glorify you. In Jesus' name, amen.
And now Ted and Tracy Bolins present their granddaughter Frances Leyva, who is the third of 10 children. Frances is 14 and in the 10th grade at St. Thomas More Academy in Sanford, where she knows and studies chemistry, algebra, music, and art. She will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you, Frances, and congratulations, Jessica, to you and your husband. Wonderful job. A moment of personal privilege, if you don't mind. I'd like to commemorate the passing of a great city volunteer and local to all of us. Joanna Mahood has passed early last week. The life and legacy of Joanna Mahood as an extraordinary educator, community advocate, inspired countless of young minds to seek knowledge, think critically, and pursue their dreams. Community service educator, she enhanced the quality of life of our neighborhoods to protect the unique character and history of our community. Former chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission, she cherished our historical resources as we remembered Joanna. Let us celebrate her spirit, accomplishments, and kindness as she shared with everyone she encountered. And keep in your thoughts and prayers, please, her husband Wade. Thank you to Stephanie Ferreira from Development Services for bringing this forward. A moment of silence, if you please. Mr. City Manager, do you have any changes to the published agenda, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I do. Would like to remove items 7B and 7G from the agenda, from the consent agenda.
7 Bravo, 7 Golf, got it?
That's all.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. It's proclamation time. I'd like the commission to join us at the podium and invite Evelyn Krajec, the, from the Council on Aging, to accept an award and a citation for this week, this month.
Senior Center Week, originated in 1979 and was proclaimed by former President Ronald Reagan in 1985, and extended to the full month in September of 2007. Whereas innovative programs hosted at senior centers have changed the perception of aging and created community resources for aging expertise. And whereas senior centers work with community partners to provide access to resources such as healthcare, financial planning, transportation assistance, socialization, and meals programs. And whereas the Council on Aging in New Smyrna Beach provides seniors with the wellness classes, music-oriented activities, and nutritionally balanced breakfasts and lunches throughout Southeast Fallujah area Meals on Wheels programs. Whereas the Senior Center Month serves as an opportunity to highlight the positive impact of seniors and what they, the seniors' impact on their lives and of older adults in their community. Now therefore, I, Fred Cleveland, the mayor of the City of New Smyrna Beach, do hereby proclaim the month of September as Senior Center Month, and witness whereof, I appear to set my hand this 24th day of September 2024. I've signed it as your mayor, and the City Clerk, Ms. McQuillan, has attested to it. Congratulations and thank you.
Yes, sir, and Mr. Mayor, I do have several updates this evening that I wanted to share. First off, on the written report, to note that Mr. Storch, who is here this evening from representing the Dearing Park Innovation Center, did request that the planned unit development application be again continued. So when you dealt with that previously, you had rescheduled that, continued it to the October 22nd meeting. You all have to take action at that October 22nd meeting to further continue it, if that's your desire. But I did want to put that out there publicly now, that I don't anticipate that that will be a discussion, a public hearing, on the 22nd of October, as previously planned. It is looking as though it will, the request is to continue it until the January 28th meeting in 2025. And there was a discussion at that same time about a work session where you could dive deep into this, and we will schedule that accordingly once we know where we are with this requested continuance. A couple of other items I wanted to follow up on. There was discussion last meeting about a comprehensive community calendar, an events calendar, so to speak. I am following up with that. Staff is working to coordinate with the various other agencies that do calendar scheduling. We've talked for several months now about 120 Flagler and the possibility of selling that property. The deadline for responses on that passed this last Friday. Unfortunately, we did not receive any responses to that. So I don't have a particular plan, path forward today, but we'll be reevaluating, reassessing, and presenting some options and alternatives to you in that regard. You all have been receiving a lot of email and communication about parking in Venetian Bay, particularly on Luna Bella Lane, and issue has certainly created a lot of stress and angst and unknowns for a lot of people, business owners, property owners, just people visiting the area. Just letting you know that we're continuing to work on that issue, communicating with the developers representative, some of the business owners on Luna Bella that are in Tuscany Square, and have a meeting scheduled with the Homeowners Association this week to see what we can do as a city to help, if there are any actions that we can take that would help in that regard. We are also continuing to coordinate with the county on the implementation of their parking program and the impacts that will potentially have on the city's parking program. I've met with county representatives on a couple of occasions now. We have staff from all of the impacted departments in the city coordinating with the county on that. Our goal is to make sure that we have a seamless implementation and that our program works in concert with their program. And so we'll be looking at what we need to do to make that happen, and we'll make recommendations as appropriate there. Somebody had requested some information on the Washington Street project. It seems that that project has taken a little bit of time to work its way through the progress, but I'm told that the engineering, the design is complete on that. We're working to obtain easements, and the project is moving forward. And then finally, wanted to, we've been busy today on storm preparation activity. We're not anticipating significant impacts here at this time. There was another update, which I haven't got just an hour or so ago, but we are tracking things carefully and making preparations as a city to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to prepare ourselves to deal with any impacts from the storm. And we've got crews out checking stormwater systems, making sure that equipment is staged, that other equipment is fueled up, ready to go, and that we've got staff ready to go as needed. We've also sent out some information today about sandbags and the availability of sandbags. And if you'll indulge me, I would like to ask Director Ray to come up and give us any other updates.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just to tag on what Mr. Cowper was explaining as well, we have checked all of our normal hotspots throughout the city. All of our permanent pump locations have been checked and monitored and cleaned out. All of our generators and fuel tanks in the city are getting topped off today and tomorrow morning, so we will have plenty of fuel for all aspects. All of our portable pumps and hoses have been taken out, have been checked, have been connected, and they are ready to be deployed as needed anywhere throughout the city. We did create several signs, and they say slowdown, water on road, no wake, which we made about 10 to 12 of those that we can deploy over city roads to stop. One of the things we found during Ian especially was when the roads were flooded, cars were driving through, and the wake is going into the houses after the water just receded. So we do have those signs ready to be deployed as needed throughout the city. Hopefully, we don't need them, but we have them ready. Our sandbag site is open 24 hours a day. As of 5:30, we've given out just over 4,000 bags so far, but they will be given out, and when this meeting is concluded, we'll all run back over to the site, and if we need to add more bags, we will for overnight. And as City Manager had alluded to, we've been out not just this week, but the past several weeks and throughout the year, cleaning storm drains as needed kind of throughout the city. So Maintenance Office is ready to handle whatever Helene wants to throw at us. Hopefully, it's something small, but you know, we're ready to help out and help out the residents any way we can.
Comments or questions for Director Ray?
Okay, how, the wake signs, darling signs, how are they going to be mounted? Where are they going to be placed? How will that work?
So we'll put them right off to the side of the roads because we don't want to cause any issues in the middle of the road.
Okay, so we know that they'll be ignored, but are they going to be put on poles or are they going to be put on plastic barricades?
Right now, we have them set up to be put on the barricades and then held down with different sandbags and different.
Which we also know will fall over.
Yeah.
Okay. Just as long as I understand the game plan.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, David. Anything more, sir?
Yes, sir. We just, more information, we have not activated any emergency management operations at this point. I'm in contact with fire department representatives about that. I don't anticipate that we will be opening any emergency facilities, but we are ready to do so if that is needed in the end. Yes, ma'am.
Where?
Any questions for the City Manager on any of his report?
Yeah, where?
Commissioner Martin, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Where will the facility be opened? There was some question last time we went around with this, where people could go.
No, ma'am, I'm not talking about shelters. I'm talking about the emergency.
Emergency Management Center, he said will not be open at this time.
Right. I have been made aware that the school system has decided to close the schools tomorrow. We will be evaluating the storm and, you know, what that looks like and making a decision about our after-school rec programs as soon as we possibly can. Thank you, so that's all.
Yvette, and I appreciate the texting that you sent out to all residents who signed up for cellphone texting, which advertised the same type of thing. So every resident that had signed up for that got a text today from the city with the same information. That's really brilliant. Thank you to the UC for getting started on that. So now time for public participation. If there's any citizen who would like to come up and let the commission understand how you feel about a certain topic, you might have an accolade for a member of the city staff, or you might have an issue you'd like us to know about. Just a reminder, this is a monologue, not a dialogue, so we won't be answering questions, but the City Clerk will be taking your contact information, and if need be, we'll get back in touch with you directly. As you come forward, you'll see a green light come on. That means you have three minutes. The yellow light means there's one minute to go, and you'll be done at the red light. And when you come forward, name and address for the record, please. Mr. Storch.
Okay. My name is Glenn Storch, 420 South Nova Road, Daytona Beach, Florida. I just want to confirm and verify what the City Manager just told you, which is that we have requested a continuance, a long-term continuance on the PUD to allow us to work together with interested citizens. We've already started that process. They've asked us for the additional time, and I think it's important that we all find time to work together on the hundreds of details that will be part of a PUD like this. It's been great so far. I really appreciate the input and the comments so far. And in fact, we're also thinking the idea of having a stakeholders' meeting, so not just the workshop that you would have to talk to us, but also a stakeholders' meeting among citizens, that they'd be able to ask questions directly of the experts and get responses as well. So the idea here is to just make sure this is totally transparent as we walk through this, but it's going to take some time, and we've got the time now. So yes, we've looked at the idea of January, in late January. It may be later than that, depending on the process, but I want to tell you that I really do appreciate everyone working together on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else for public participation?
Hi there, my name is Kim Higgins. I'm at 1340 North Atlantic, and I own four businesses on Flagler Avenue, the Freaky Tiki, the Big Bamboo, Bamboo Trading Company, and Captain Fisher's. And I'm here with some of my fellow retailers and restaurant owners. Last week, we were flooded again by not a hurricane, just a rainstorm. This is the third time, and it doesn't take a hurricane to flood the 400 block of Flagler Avenue. What's happening is we get a lot of water from the street. There's not enough drainage for the water to go down fast. It comes up fast and comes into all of our businesses and costs us, I mean, lost business, lost inventory, lost time, and we're small businesses. We can't afford this. We're asking the city to consider to close Flagler Avenue when we have a torrential rainstorm, not just a hurricane, because the wake, I know you're putting the wake signs up, that's not going to work. The water, people come down, and even if they're going slow, the water rushes up and into our stores. In particular, because I own four stores on that 400 block, all of the stores on the 400 block have suffered flooding three times now, and I just, I can't afford it anymore. So we want to stay on Flagler. New Smyrna is really special because we have specialty retail and independent restaurants, and we want to keep it that way, but we need you to help us keep it charming and keep us open. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. We'll be in touch. Is there anyone else for public participation? Evening, Rudy.
Mayor? My name's Rudy Guerrero. I'm at 415 Flagler Avenue. I'm a business owner there at the complex known as Shops on Flagler. If y'all don't know where that is, that's across the street from the tavern and the beacon, so we're the shops across the street, actually at the crossroads of Atlantic and Flagler. We've been having this flooding problem for a number of years. This is not just one or two incidences. I've been there six years, and every year we have at least two incidences where just a flash rain will bring that water up to over the curb level, and as these, as traffic traverses through there, we constantly are out there trying to hold people from driving through there, and that water comes into the buildings. Now Saturday, which was 10 days ago, we had a flash flood that lasted 45 minutes. In that 45 minutes, we had flood inside the building. It may be funny now, or was funny then, but people in Peanuts were playing pool in the We had a lot of, and most of it was brought on by the traffic. If we can get some sort of signage, permission to make signs, or get some very, not so much pole sign is to hold people from coming, if we have to, we need to, but if we can get them to start slowing down through there, that will be part of the problem. That will solve some of the problem. The two issues that I see there is either that was engineered very long, what, 40 years ago? And the second issue is the maintenance. Now, do we need a better maintenance problem or a better maintenance program to help us clean that? Because at that point in front of Peanuts, where all that water puddles, there's two main sewers there. Now, there must, the water's coming from the beach and coming from Flagler, down Flagler, east and west, and that's where all this water puddles, holes, and then starts moving into the buildings. So the issue is engineering would be the long-term plan. The short-term plan is we need to have some maintenance and some signage to keep all this traffic from pushing this water into our business. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Also, yes, sir. And this comes.
From the backside as well.
Jasmine is also floating, are flooding.
Thanks, Rudy.
We're just kind of going along down the line. I am Brandon Bear, the manager of Peanuts Sports Bar. So on this topic that we're talking about, yes, it goes from front and back. Most of it comes in through the front. We have hurricane doors that the water seeps underneath. If you go out to the front, and David actually was there on Monday, and I talked with him on Monday, if you look to the right, it's elevated because obviously the seawall. If you look to the left, it's elevated. We are at the bottom of Flagler Avenue. So we are 100% the ones that get impacted first and worst. And so we, there just needs to be something going on because there is a storm drain there, and it is not holding up. And so that's the major issue is we literally have a storm drain out front of our front door, and it's just getting overflown. I don't know if we need to widen the pipes. I don't know if we need to do some other incident, but we are going to be, every single time a flood happens, whether it be a hurricane or any other sorts, you know, it was just, as they said, a flash flood, we're going to be the first ones that go underwater every single time. And then to talk about Jessamine, yes. I, that day, last 10 days ago, I got a brand-new car, and my car was flooded underneath water that, within three hours of owning it. So that was on the back end. So I mean, Jessamine is something that should not be ignored either on that aspect. I do think the majority of the water is coming from the front end and not the back end, but it's just both, you know? And it's just tough as, you know, somebody that's running a business to continue to try to fight that off because, I mean, we're sitting there, we're buying more sandbags and all this stuff, but how do you know when it's a flash flood? I mean, it's one thing, we know that a storm is coming in the next few days. We're ready for it. But on a Saturday, and you see rain chance, we get flooded out. And we're talking about four to five inches of rain, water in from door to door, front to back. And ironically, we got a bad review for kicking people out. So we got kicked out because of the rain. And I sat there, I, you chuckle, I chuckled too, so, but I'm sitting there, I'm like, that's, we lost a lot of business that day, and there's nothing we could do to prepare for that, other than we need to be, make sure that our city system is prepared for it. So that's all I ask. I appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else for public participation?
Cindy Harris, 1035 South Glencoe Road. I know I introduced myself as Cindy Harris, but my real name, full name, is Cindy Shelton Harris, and some of you may have known my family or know of my family. And I've talked about Flagler Avenue and Canal Street earlier, but there's areas of other areas of New Smyrna Beach that are also of concern, such as Pioneer Trail and Mission Road, Venetian Bay, Sugar Mill, Glencoe Road, Glen Circle, State Road 44 itself. After Ian, I have never, and I've lived my, the majority of my life here in New Smyrna Beach, I have never, ever seen State Road 44 flood all the way to Glencoe Road. Never. I've never seen Canal Street flood. I've never seen Flagler flood until Ian, and now that's normal. That's normal. So basically, all of New Smyrna, all of Fallujah County is now a flood zone. We've got to do something. Longtime residents of New Smyrna are being flooded out of their homes. Mr. Mayor, you said earlier that go forward, if we mess it up, we can change it. It's time that we change it. Okay? We need to do something. And I propose, I have a proposal. We do an immediate moratorium on any more construction, period. Stop it. We can, we can change it. The definition of insanity is to continue to do the same thing over and over and over again, getting the same results. The destruction of the wetlands, the construction that's going on now, coastal woods, the new phases out at Venetian Bay, Dearing Park that's going to go in on the west side of 95. All of this destruction is causing this right now. Until we know for sure that that's not the problem, let's stop it. Enlist the assistants of the Army Corps of Engineers, get them down here to make us a plan, do a conservation plan to preserve enough wetlands to stop the stormwater backflow, to stop the wildlife from invading residential areas that are highly populated. They're bringing in disease, starving animals? Stop it. Edgewater's done it. Right now, our commissioners have mud on their face because Edgewater has a plan now. They're doing something. They're taking action. We need to do that now, too. Please, let's do something. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else for public participation? Evening, Cynthia.
Hi. Cindy Snizak, 512 Upon. I just wanted to say I really applaud Attorney Storch's suggestion that he would hold some sort of public forum or information Q and A kind of exchange.
Hold that microphone up to your mouth a little better, Cynthia.
On Dearing Park, the MDA and the PUD. And I'm particularly glad of that because the last couple of meetings when there was conversation about Dearing Park, I was disturbed to hear the attorney say that we've acted on every point that staff brought forward to us. Well, I've read the proposed documents. In fact, I talked to Jason and Randy at the election forum about it, and there was scant information in those documents. Basically, it was a wide-open kind of thing. So as you're starting to get to know the staff, the City Manager Cowper, there are gaps, definitely, in how we. are gaps, definitely, in how we analyze and assess situations, how we go about doing a gap analysis, if we in fact do a gap analysis, and perhaps not as much looking outside of the experience of the folks on staff who may or may not honestly have worked most, if not all, of their career in this city. So that's kind of limiting in terms of the things you can come up with. And that's not a dig on anyone, it's just that more minds can contribute more ideas than the same few minds kicking the, the ideas around. So anyway, thank you to Attorney Storch on that. And I trust, and have great confidence you'll post the revised parking report that Matthew, I forgot his name, had mentioned some changes to. That would be great. I'm, I'm also trustful and hopeful that you will pull for discussion 7J, unless I missed it, because I was in Orlando all day, whether there were responses to the questions I had asked about how well-protected we are in, in joining in with Hidden Lakes on their easement maintenance, and whether or not we will also sometime this evening get some of the budget trend information that I think, Mr. Mayor, you, you gave an amen to that probably would be good information to have about our budget before we adopt our millage. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Vanderhorst, 562 Aeolian Drive. I live just off the intersection of Sugar Mill and Pioneer Trail. And I'm sure the commissioners and the mayor and our new city manager have received my recent emails, and hopefully the photos came through. We're having trouble with email ever since the construction started out there. I'm, I'm here tonight to talk about a critical initiative that piggybacks on what I've already heard. I'm encouraged to hear you say that you're working with county officials on different things, on certain projects. It's not enough. There needs to be a coordinated effort with, all agencies are involved in a project that impact our residents and taxpayers, whether it be county, St. John's River Water Management, all of the entities that you know verbatim. I don't, I'm not an engineer, but I'm watching it happen, and I'm tired of living with it because it's not happening. The, the reason why I'm here tonight is because of the project at Sugar Mill and Pioneer Trail. That, that project started in December of '23, supposed to be done by September of this year. Since it began, it has been a nightmare. Our community is under siege. We, they're working 24, from 8:00 PM till 2:00 AM sometimes, with heavy trucks within 100 yards, 100 feet of our homes. Our internet, our Wi-Fi has been severed multiple times. They actually disrupted, completely disrupted the stormwater system on the southeast and west side of Pioneer Trail that accepts the conveyance from Coastal Woods, Isles of Sugar Mill, Landings, and everybody south of us, say Serena Lakes, all along 40, Sugar Mill to 44. Those pipes have been severed. They're blocked. They're actually blocked with, one of them's blocked with wood and a pile of mud, and the other one is completely disconnected. The water has nowhere to go but us. We're the low point. We are the lowest elevation in that area. And when it comes down to Pioneer Trail, it's going to back up in our community. We don't stand a chance. We just don't stand a chance. Coastal Wood empties into us, 113 home units. They have, I don't know, what, 1,000? Don't know. But seven of their ponds empty into our tiny little system, and our system is supposed to empty into those Sugar Mill ditches. It can't. There's nowhere for it to go. So my proposal is, I would like to see the commission, I'm not sure how this works based on our charter, what I'd like to see is the commissioners to task our new city manager, who's got the fresh ears, eyes, and experience and outside exposure, to coordinate a task force committee to bring those agencies together on, on all projects, not just some, where we do a SWAT analysis. Because what's happened in the last five years is going to continue to happen in the next 20 years if we don't do something. And I'm piggybacking on what they said, something has to change.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Appreciate your comments. You're done.
Okay, but I, I would like to give this to you.
Hand it to the city clerk, and we'll, we'll have it distributed. Thank you, though. Appreciate your comments. Thank you, ma'am. Jess.
Mr. Mayor. Kelly. 708 Saskiapa Street. I'm going to borrow a page from Mr. Dr. Herman, a rose and a thorn. We'll start with the rose for you. Yesterday, I had the honor of attending the opening ceremony for the senior games. What an outstanding event. The services, Mr. Salazar and Ms. Fitzgerald did a great job. Today, we had the opening for pickleball, another great event. People were excited, well-organized, we all had a lot of fun. Now for the thorn. The, I came here with another subject I wanted to discuss, but hearing the couple today, people today talking about flooding, I thought about, before when Ian and Nicole came through here, I stood here before the last mayor and two commissioners and spoke about what our city went through. And I asked for a after-action report, because citizens would know how well the city did, what it didn't do, what it could do, what the limitation factors were, needed more resources, whatever it was. And then when you three came on board, Commissioner McGurk and Hartman were still here, I asked for the same thing. I stood and said, this place has been, been full three times. Was the mural ordinance, never came through. Pine Island folks came out here in droves, Ellison Acres, they came out here in droves. And then something else had happened, and I forget what it was there. And, and so I asked for, and I asked for an after-action report from the city to say, how did we respond to this event here? What did we do right? What did we do wrong? You know, not because you didn't know how to do it, but you learn things. I lived in, my career evolved about actions, missions, and after-action reports, to where if you go out and do an event, whatever it is, we get together afterwards, what happened? Like a shooting incident, police department, what did it happen there? Those are called reports. We don't do that here. We just go and say, okay, move on here. Now, I know a new city manager's here, the old one left. I asked him many times, it never happened. So again, we do, if we known what we did in Flagler that happened there, we say, well, work on it this year. Here we are two years later, nothing has happened. So like everybody says, it has to change. It has to change somehow. We need to know what the city limitations are when it comes to flooding, what we can and can't do. We just sit up here and say, oh, we should have, da, da, da. We don't know, because we don't know, we don't know. If you don't tell us that we can't do this because the water's here and the water's there, the table's too high, we can't help that. So please, I ask you, as we move forward, hopefully we don't get a bad storm this time around, let's plan on this here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else for public participation?
Good evening. My name is Joel Page. I live on 12th Avenue in New Smyrna Beach. I've lived there pretty close to 20 years now, in the same house. And I want to repeat or continue on this discussion about flooding. At the end of 12th Avenue, since two hurricane, two years ago, when we had the two hurricanes in a row, A1A has turned into a lake. Now, between 12th and, excuse me, between 13th and 11th, the road has sunk. It's changing. I don't know, it could be because there was four feet of water on it for a month and never cleared off, but all that weight and all the building that's going on there, everything is getting unstable there. And the new houses that they just put in, they put in, I don't know, five houses on these lots. One of them looks like a giant, like the Marriott, I don't know what the heck's going on there. But there's three, between one foot and three feet of water at the end of the driveway on A1A after the smallest amount of rain. Every time it rains, the water is this deep right at the end of their driveway. They can't get in and out. I don't know how they get it out. I don't know how they got a building permit to build on a lake. That road is sinking, and it needs to be looked at. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, being so close to the beach and all the, all the action that's been going on the beach and the higher tides and everything else, that land is moving over there, and there's going to be a big problem soon. Or it's a big problem now. But it needs to be looked at and taken care of because we all know that the flooding doesn't change, it just gets worse. Nothing gets better. We're not putting Band-Aids on wounds here. You know, it doesn't get better, it doesn't heal. And it's going to be, and you talk about $4 billion here, $3 million here, all the money in the world is not going to fix this stuff if you don't maintain it. And that's where we're going to right now. All the buildings here in this town not maintained, you see what happens to them. Well, the roads are exactly the same, as you all know. And it's just, I'd hate to see that road collapse out there, but it's come, it's going. And I, I would suggest that somebody goes out there and get an engineer and look and see what's happening. I would say the road is, I mean, when I first moved here, there was nothing there. Now, every time it rains, it's a foot deep there. And we'll forget about when we had the hurricanes. Everybody drove through that, whoever was out on the beachside there, the water was over three feet deep on hills, and it all runs there, there's no drainage there at all.
Thank you, Joel. Appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
Oh, but I like running over time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? Seeing none, public participation's now closed. Move on to the consent agenda. 20 items on there. I strike that, 18. The city manager took off seven Bravo and seven Gulf. Is there any of my colleagues who would like to comment on any of those items? I would like to comment on seven Echo and thank the airport manager, Alvin Wies, for squaring away older documents that are required by the FAA annual basis and the adjustments that are being made to get the paperwork under control so we can continue to qualify for the millions of dollars of grants. I'd like to ask the city attorney to comment on item 7J for clarity, if you don't mind. This is the consideration of approval of Hidden Lake Village Emergency Access Easement Maintenance Reimbursement Agreement.
Sure. So this agreement is the, is the result of a lawsuit that's been going on since April 2021. The lawsuit's about two adjacent property owners and an emergency access agreement. The emergency access agreement is something that would rarely, if ever, be used. It's for the train tracks that are over by the municipal sports complex. There's going to be a development, like a Gulf Village development, just to the west of that. In the event somebody in that neighborhood needed emergency service and a train was stuck there or, you know, stopped on the tracks, they have the ability to go over the adjoining property owner's golf course to access and get to those residents. So in order to, the, the two property owners couldn't come to a resolution, so ultimately, the emergency access easement was dedicated to the city. You know, on a daily basis, the golf course is going to be maintaining it, it's, it's adjacent to their cart path and partly on their cart path. The, we were looking for some sort of reassurance that if we ever did have to do some extraordinary maintenance out there, that we could get reimbursed for it. And that's what this agreement deals with. So in the event something strange happened, we can bill the village HOA, not the golf course, the village HOA for any repairs necessary. There were some concerns about whether, what if the HOA went defunct? Well, this could, it's a, can be levied either through the HOA or a special assessment for those benefited property owners.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Any other comment? Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to do a little shout-out on 7T, the sculpture. It'll be the second piece of true art sculpture in our city. It's a very generous gift, and it's in the Watchtower Park. For those who have not seen it, the Watchtower Park is a new little park done by the Friends of New Smyrna Parks. And Mr. Goldstein has created a sculpture that includes a piece of the original Watchtower that was used from World War II to look for enemy submarines. Do I have that right? And so I, I just think it's, it's a wonderful gift, and I'm so thankful to get it.
Thank you, ma'am. That's nice. Anybody want to pull any of the items on the consent agenda? 7Q I'd like to pull, and 7C ERA I would like to pull. Is it then a motion? Anybody else want to pull any? Okay. Is there a motion then to approve the consent agenda, item 7? Alpha, Charlie, Delta, Echo, Foxtrot, Hotel, India, Juliet, Kilo, Lima, Mike, November, Oscar, Papa, Romeo, and Tango?
So moved.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes.
Thank you.
The change order on the Marina Dock repair is a significant change order with a significant price tag on it. And so maybe just a little enlightenment, Mr. City Manager, on the plan to go forward and how we discovered, and then maybe follow on your philosophy on a maintenance plan so that after we get it fixed, it's a enterprise account, so it's self-sustaining, how we might change the, the future of that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I'll call on the Leisure Services Director to give us some more information on this. But generally, the, the project bid was, was let, the project has started. It took quite some time from the initial damage assessments and reports and to develop the scope of, of work and the budgeting process. The project, I think, was, was scaled back somewhat. The contractor is now out there, and as they are working, they are discovering more and more issues and defects that need to be addressed. So we've asked them, and they have developed a budget and scope of work to get the job done. That is what's in front of you this evening. So we do, the Marina is, as you mentioned, an enterprise operation. We receive rental fees for that, that, that funds the operation. There, there are reserve funds that are available to, to, to fund this, this additional construction work going forward. As we just did, we'll continue to evaluate the fees that we are charging for that facility. Obviously, the nicer we make the facility, the, the more the rental fees should be. And so we'll continue to evaluate that. And I think going forward, you know, I'd suggest, I heard a lot of discussion during the budget about our fleet and about setting up a, a fund for fleet so that we're not getting behind the ball on fleet replacement. Something similar to that for our, our building assets and, and other assets is probably appropriate as well, so that we can continue to put money aside in a capital fund and make sure that we maintain these facilities the way that they need to. Rob, can you add anything to that, sir?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Commissioner. I'd like to just follow up on a couple of those items. Mayor Cleveland, you addressed what's our plan moving forward. Something that I've been looking at in the lead time since we've received the, the feedback was more of a inspection process, that I've pulled some data from other municipalities and on monthly inspections, weekly inspections, yearly inspections, what we need to be looking at. So I, I, I'm working on drafting something similar to that. As City Manager Cowper alluded to, the initial inspection for this project was conducted in late 2021, and when we went out for bid in '24, the inspection was already a little dated. So a lot of the issues that were originally listed as no damage or minor had become minor damage or medium damage, and stuff with medium damage was now And stuff with medium damage was now severe damage. So that threw a wrench in the budget. And we've reviewed the, um, change order proposal from in-depth with Taylor Engineering, city staff. And the work that's being proposed is critical towards the integrity of the work being done. So we need to do the work that's on the table for the work that's already being done to be successful, pretty much. So that's, my recommendation would be to approve the change order. We will continue to look at the processes that have led us here and improve as we move forward.
Thank you so much. Any comments or questions? Thank you, Rob, appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So, uh, can I have a motion to approve, uh, item seven Quebec?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item seven S is the special event for the Shark Bite Expo Half Marathon 5K, along with the Feeding Frenzy 5K in 2025. Rob, on the application, there is a check mark that says parking plan. And so do they have, do you know what the parking plan is for that? Do they have to give you specifics of that? I worry that it's just a check mark and there is maybe not a parking plan.
Yes, sir, there is a plan. I believe it's in the attachment. I'm scrolling to it, just one second.
I didn't see it, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, it's, yes, sir, the, there's an additional document that's more of a typed document that outlines the details because there's so many moving parts to this event. Um, in the text, it outlines the Saturday parking plan will be located in and around the Canal Street District. And then the Sunday plan will be parking will be located in and around the Flagler District. So there's not a shuttle or, um, anything specific that would differentiate this event from a normal, um, business on a daily, you know, on a specific day. But that, that's the plan and they did illustrate that in the application.
And you're comfortable with, if, I just want you and the chief to be comfortable with the plan. If you guys are comfortable with it, I'm fine.
Yes, sir. Uh, this event went through the Special Events Committee. Fire, police, and code all signed off on the event. Um, and it was reviewed as any other event would be. Yes, sir.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Any comments or questions? Have a motion, please, to approve item seven Sierra, the special event for the Shark Bite Expo.
Make that motion.
Second.
A second. Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on to item eight A, the Charter Officer Compensation and Contract Discussion. I see Director Kidd at the podium.
Mr. Mayor, I want to bring something up before we get started on the item. I'm gonna propose that we postpone this until the next meeting when we have all five commissions, uh, available. I think that this is an important enough issue to where, uh, we should all be here making, uh, those, these decisions that need to be made. So I apologize for any inconvenience to, uh, any of the staff and to HR Director or to, um, Kelly or people looking at different possible raises. But two weeks is not a big deal and I think it's just incredibly important that we're all here.
Set in a form of a motion, sir.
Like to postpone this item to the, um, October 8th. Is that, I believe, the next meeting, which should be, let me pull my calendar?
The right date, that's the right date.
So to the October 8th meeting.
Second for discussion, anyone?
I'll second.
There's a second. And anybody that wanna opine about that? Three charter officers, five members of the commission. Think it's a reasonably good move. And I'm sorry, Heather, for getting, having you spool up and now have to postpone. Any other discussion? Madam City Attorney, uh, Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
No.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. Thank you, the motion carries. Okay. So we're on to ordinances, second readings, and public hearings. There's an ordinance 5324, which is to conduct a second reading and public hearing for an ordinance which, if adopted, would amend the city code to require business impact estimates for certain municipality ordinances. Madam City Attorney, if you'll read the ordinance 5324 for the second time by title only, please.
Ordinance number 5324, an ordinance amending the City of New Smyrna Beach Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter One, General Provisions, to add Section 116 Business Impact Estimates, implementing the state's statutory mandate to prepare business impact estimates prior to the adoption of proposed ordinances pursuant to Section 1660414 Florida statutes. Adopting Business Impact Estimate Procedures, Requirements, and Exemptions, Providing for Codification, Providing for Public Hearing, Providing for Conflicting Ordinances, Providing for Severability, and Providing an Effective Date.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. Uh, Madam City Attorney, do you have your report?
Um, yes, this ordinance is a result of a statutory mandate that was, um, came down. It actually came in 2023 with several exemptions, um, including, you know, anything related to land development, um, purchasing budgets. There's this whole list of exemptions where it wasn't really applying to anything we were doing. 2024, they amended the statute and they removed, um, land development decisions that are initiated by the city. So now any applicant-driven applications, those are still exempt, but ours would not be. So this, it opens it up a little bit more where it may be applicable, but for the majority of items we see, we will be exempt from this statement. When we're not exempt, we have an internal procedure set up with the Economic Development Director, where the items, when they go through the review process, will go to her and she will fill out the form as to an impact, you know, on, uh, businesses in the community with any proposed action. And that's what we have here tonight.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. Any questions for the city attorney? There you go. The public hearing is now open. There's any citizen who would wish to speak on this topic, please come forward and you'll be heard for three minutes. Seeing none, public participation is now closed. And now, uh, the commission, do you have any questions or comments before we take this consideration to vote? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt ordinance 5324?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Here, yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Here, uh, yes. Thank you so much, we're listening. Okay, the ordinance is adopted. Uh, this is another second reading, ordinance 54, uh, I'm sorry, 5424, uh, for the second time by title only, please, Madam City Attorney.
Ordinance number 5424, an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the Utilities Commission, City of New Smyrna Beach, for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. I see the New Smyrna Beach Utility CEO, Efrem Chavez, in the audience. Your report, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. Uh, just wanted to give up, before I talk a little bit about the budget, just wanted to give you an update on Helene. So consistent with what, uh, City Manager Cowport indicated, we are also preparing as well, so we expect it to be a Friday night and, I mean, tomorrow night into Thursday, most of Thursday, maybe into Friday. But we have crews ready and we are in good shape. So we're preparing and monitoring as it, uh, as it continues, so. Uh, second item, I do have Cody Gurven here. He's a finance rep as well in the finance department, so just wanted to introduce him. Uh, now back to the budget. So yes, uh, as we kind of gave a brief summary last time, approximately $83 million in revenue, $68 million in expenses, a 10-year capital budget of around $287 million. So we are, every year we do a budget, a 10-year budget, and, uh, we are in good shape to continue reliability and resiliency of our infrastructure for the long-term benefit of our customers. So didn't know if there was any questions, but that's the end of the report.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Chavez? Efrem, I, I know you're changing to a chemical pellet to purify the water. Can you talk for a second about that and what the additional cost would be? And could you also talk about your budget growth year over year?
Yes, so specifically on the pellet softening, um, that is a, we are switching the way we would treat our water. Currently, it's a lime softening process, which is, i- it was for its time. It's a, it's used, but it is an older process. Now we're going to a more efficient, uh, less chemically intensive, you know, you won't have this lime sludge at his disposal. Uh, this pellet softening is a pretty, uh, unique and used-tested methodology. In essence, it's pellets of, uh, sand, in essence, that then helps clarify, clean the water. And then you have a bio, bio-friendly, um, out product, which would be used for road base. So it's a, it's a good, um, good for the environment, good for us in processing, uh, the water. In addition, it actually helps extend the life of the plant because it is a much more efficient current-date technology. As far as the, uh, increase in the 10-year budget, so we increased about $50 million over the prior 10-year budget and that's really driven by a number of the initiatives that we're doing on the electric and water side. Uh, on the electric side, we have the transmission loop, which provides redundancy to our electric system. We have the sub aqua crossing on the south, uh, causeway, so that one is a big. So a number of these big initiatives are now starting to come into play. And, you know, now post-COVID, everything costs definitely much more and longer timeframes. But our engineering group has worked well to identify what those costs are. We're actually kicking off a number of these projects, uh, in this coming fiscal year.
Appreciate that so much. Any other questions from any of my colleagues? Would you give us, uh, a couple of soundbites on, uh, the capital potential for moving out west? How that's cooking?
Yes, so what we are looking at right now, so we, just on September 11th, we had a workshop, uh, with Dr. Fishkind, who presented a kind of a multi, we would, the proposal there would be to have, uh, Canal Street Headquarters, Field Street, um, field operations on Smith Street, and then coming off of Swoop Street. Uh, so that option would, um, we would move all three locations out there. But at the same time, there is consideration of making some of the land that borders 44, making that pad ready for a much bigger development since that would be kind of the focal point of that area. Well, so that's an option. But, uh, as we're looking at that option at yesterday's commission meeting, we did discuss an option where a more of a bare-bones kind of an option, which would be moving, um, the field operations as well as Swoop Street, and then maybe potentially doing the Canal Street relocation in the future. Right now, what we wanted, the difference in the two, um, proposals is the original moving all three buildings plus having some of that frontage, it is a substantial, uh, capital investment on our part, which from a financing perspective, which we are already looking at, would, would take some, uh, we can, we can do it. It's just a much bigger project, uh, capital-intensive and then would result in some sales of some of that land to offset that. The other option was just kind of that bare bones that we discussed yesterday. What we, the, we presented all the information because our commission needs to have a unanimous decision on that, so it's gotta be all five before we proceed. Either option, we can execute. Uh, it's just a matter of now, we just need to ensure that the commission, can get around an idea and proceed on that one. Once it goes past our commission, uh, then it would come, we actually planned to do a, um, open house or public outreach to get, you know, public input. After that, it would come back to our commission and then it would, once a decision has been made as to which way they're going to go, we would then, uh, come to the city commission for the vote on it since it needs to have a supermajority with your commission, so.
Right now, this is all budget-neutral for, for the, for the $50 million that increase?
Yes, because, yes, this is outside of that budget just for the very fact that, uh, it is such a large and unique expenditure. We will, we, but we've already talked to our financial advisor, Southeastern Investment Securities, and there are definitely ways with our excellent bond rating to figure out some pretty good financing options.
Really good, thank you so much. Yeah, on behalf of the city, we appreciate the reliability increases and we appreciate, uh, your steady hand on the wheel as you take over. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it for your report.
Thank you.
Public hearing is now open. If there are any citizens who wish to speak on this particular matter, please come forward, you'll be heard for three minutes. Seeing none, public participation is now closed. Uh, if the commission has no other discussion on this, I'm looking for a motion to adopt ordinance 5424.
Move to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you very much. And now a motion, uh, Resolution 7124 to consider an adoption of a revolution, which, resolution which, if adopted, would approve the fiscal year 2024-2025 CRA budget. Madam City Attorney, by title only, please.
Resolution number 7124, a resolution of the City of New Smyrna Beach adopting the annual budget for the Community Redevelopment Agency for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30th, 2025, providing for conflicting resolutions and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. A public hearing is now open. If there's anyone that would like to, uh, speak on the CRA budget for 2024-25, please come forward and you'll be heard for three minutes. Seeing none, public participation is now closed. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 7424?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, Resolution 7124, approving $4,006, uh, $4,060,000 for a fiscal year 2024-2025. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. Motion carries. And now a resolution which, if adopted, would approve the final New Smyrna Beach operating millage rate. Madam City Attorney, please read the Resolution 6824 by title only, please.
A resolution, a resolution of the City of New Smyrna Beach determining the amount and fixing the rate of taxation and making the annual property ad valorem levy in the amount of $4.6370 mils per $1,000 of non-exempt assessed value for general fund operations of the city for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 through September 30th, 2025, which represents a 13.62% increase from the rollback rate of 4.0813 and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. Any discussion by the commission? Public hearing is now open. If there are any citizen who would like to address the commission on the, uh, operating millage rate, please come forward, you'll be heard for three minutes. Seeing none, public participation is now closed. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 6824 adopting the final operating millage rate at 4.6370?
One, um, just for compliance with 265065, the name of the taxing authority is the City of New Smyrna Beach. The rollback rate is 4.0813. It represents a 13.62% tax increase and the millage rate to be levied is 4.6370.
Thank you, ma'am, for the record. Any other discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Is there a motion maker in a second?
I thought we had a motion, I'm sorry, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
No.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, on to Resolution 6924 to consider adoption of a, a, a resolution which, if adopted, with the final New Smyrna Beach INS 2018 maximum millage rate. Madam City Attorney, number 6924 by title only, please.
Resolution number 6924, a resolution of the City of New Smyrna Beach determining the amount and fixing the rate of taxation and making the annual property ad valorem levy in the amount of .0895 mils per $1,000 of non-exempt assessed value for INS 2018 voted debt service for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 through September 30th, 2025 and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. Public hearing is now open. If there are any citizen who wish to speak on this matter, please approach the podium, you'll be heard. to speak on this matter, please approach the podium. You'll be heard. Seeing none public participation is now closed. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 6924, adopting the final INS debt service maximum millage rate of .0895?
Motion to adopt Resolution 6924.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes.
Thank you.
On to item 9F, Resolution 7024, consideration of adoption of a resolution which if adopted would adopt the final New Smyrna Beach budget for fiscal year 2425. Madam City Attorney, 7024 by title only, please.
Resolution number 7024, resolution of the city of New Smyrna Beach, adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 to September 30th, 2025, and providing for an effective date.
Public hearing is now open. Any citizen wishing to speak on the final budget for 2024, 25, please come forward. You'll be heard. Seeing none public participation is now closed. There discussion by the commission. Yes, sir.
I, I still have some questions, concerns about the police boathouse, whether or not it's 250 or 75, whether it's design, whether it's construction. If I could get some clarity on that.
Yes, sir. Where's Chief Feldman? There he is. If you'll come up, Chief, you can answer some of these questions. But yes, it includes both design and construction money. It was formerly just for design, but we added the construction to it. Chief, if you don't mind.
Thank you. So I think the confusion, Commissioner, is there was a lot of kind of back and forth on the fine grant application as we worked through the AOB phases and then what part would be the police boathouse. Ultimately, we were awarded the 70,000 plus or minus for the architect engineering permits for the boathouse, which the city will be responsible for half of that. So our plan is to, to move forward with that first. I mean, it's great, since it will be impact fees only and will impact the budget, should that be allowable in the budget, if we get to a point where we can move forward with construction and we choose not to go back to find, at least that gives us the option moving forward.
Okay, because I think that the verbiage in the budget actually said it was for design only. So
Right.
I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that.
Yeah, just clarify the answer. It's the 70,000 for design, not 250.
All right.
Anything else for the chief?
No. We did have some discussion the last meeting about unpaid parking fines. And you said you should have some data for us about the years gone past.
Yep. So far, since we initiated the contract with Duncan, which were coming up, I think on 11 months, it's been about $20,000 in unpaid fines that have been collected.
Okay. But I think before that, we were into millions of dollars of unpaid fines. Are we still?
700,000 or so, I believe. Yeah, we got a long ways to go.
All right. And now we'll just go into the general fund.
It does go to the general.
That's not accounted this year for revenues.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
What point do you write that off as bad debt? Or does that happen?
No, I think we, we continue to hold them, you know, if the commission recalls, we just instituted the, with an update to the ordinance, the ability to restrict renewal of their registration. So I'm just waiting for that to have a cause and effect.
Thank you, chief. Anybody else? Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
I renewed mine, so I must have not had any parking tickets.
Was there more, Commissioner?
That was it. Thank you.
I've handed out a proposal, part of this budget is a raised proposal for, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 12 members of our team, mostly senior members. And we had a discussion earlier about the amount of the, the increase. You can see it there. It ranges from 8% to 19% in a single year. I know some of this was, I've had a conversation with Director Kidd and the city manager about, about this. I, I'm challenged to accept a double-digit increase in salary in any one particular year. And so I would, was looking forward to having a discussion about a two- or three-year stair step up to that raise so that it would pass this citizen smell check, the, my personal experience from both in government service and in industry with such a generous raise, so that any raise over, any double-digit raise would be stair stepped up in two or three years rather than immediately. That's where my head was, and happy to hear what others think.
So my comments on that was some of these were supposed to be adjusted last year, and we never, we held off on some of them because we were already at almost 0.2 over budget. So we had to, you know, push that forward to this year to pay for some of those contracted raises. So some of these, we got pushed back last year. So they kind of got held off some last year. So some of it's a little bit of a catch-up.
They were zero, Randy? They got zero? They didn't get any?
They don't, they got the 3%. So everybody got the 3%, but there was, there were compaction numbers from the previous year that they were trying to get, you know, up to a certain level. And some of these individuals got held back because we just ran out of money last year. Much, yes. So that was, on some of these issues, that's it. I don't disagree with maybe trying to stair step them, but I just read the other day that the county just did a 5% across the board for all of their people. So even with the 3% this year, we're already behind what the, you know, county levels are going to be next year. And, you know, that's what got us into trouble where we had the big pay raises two years ago, was to try to get everybody in line with the compaction and everything else. So I don't disagree with you, but you know, I, I don't have that much of heartache about it. Certainly, if you want to propose, propose something different.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Commissioner McGurk?
So do we, do we recall who was, who was delayed from last year? Because I do not recall specifically who that would have been. So
Director Kidd can answer that.
I'm sorry?
HR Director can answer that.
Okay.
Good evening again.
Thank you.
Commissioner McGurk, last year, we submitted the same increases for the Economic Development Director, the HR Director, the Leisure Services Director, and the Maintenance Ops Director.
Okay, so we submitted and we didn't give them anything other than the 3%
Correct.
increase. Okay. Are any of these increases that I'm looking at right now due to a specific promotion? Or is it just currently held in their current positions?
Current, in their current positions.
Okay. And in terms, I know we have this problem where we go back, you know, we're slow to give raises, so we get behind the eight ball. Some of these increases that are high, you know, 19, 17, 15%, do any of these have to do with the fact that we are playing catch-up? In other words, is some kind of explanation as to why those, some of these specific increases are so high?
Sure. I can speak to the issue with the deputy police chief, the police cap, and the two police captains. Those are due to compression issues because our union employees have received different compression issues, or I apologize, different compression increases. They got a little bit higher than what the non-bargaining employees got in '22. And so it's, it, a compounding effect between the compression of those and the overtime that the lower-level employees are able to gain, that was not factored in when we did the compression for these three positions specifically. We have our sergeants and, and not our lieutenants any longer, but before we changed them to a salary that, that they're at, their, their wages are compressing upon these three positions. And so those three are specifically due to a compression issue.
So did I hear, if I understood correctly, you're talking about there's overtime available to certain staff that are not available to others?
Correct. And we didn't factor that in when we looked at the pay that we gave to our lieutenants, who, when we changed those positions. Remember, if you can remember back, at least as far as I've been here for four years, we had lieutenants, we got rid of lieutenants, we made captains, we brought lieutenants back. And when we brought those lieutenants back the second time, we didn't factor in the overtime that they were earning as sergeants, and put them in just at a, at a level where it has compressed up.
Okay, the, all right, that, that, right, it gets technical, especially with those who can do overtime and those who can't. That's, that creates a whole nother discussion at another time. Okay, thank you. You've answered my question at least.
Okay.
You know, I can go either way on this. You know, 19% increases. Was Heather, I'm sorry. So we just hired the Economic Development Director.
Mm-hmm.
And we're going to give an 11% increase on top of what we just hired at? How's, is that kind of budgeted as part of the negotiation?
It was. So this goes back to a year ago, when we asked for the same type of increase for the Economic Development Director who was here at the time. We asked for that same increase because of the study that we had done at the time. We continued that study along this year. So when we recruited Ms. Bergeron from Edgewater, she was actually making a higher salary there than the salary that we were offering. So when the previous city manager and I negotiated with her, we put it in that if it was approved in the budget, we would increase her salary to the average amount that we've been looking at for all of the department.
She made more at Edgewater than what we're
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. No more questions.
Mr. Martin, your thoughts?
I'm uncomfortable about a lot of things. I, I would look forward to getting, I feel like we're doing things piecemeal. And if we had an outside agency that did real job descriptions and salary and benefit comparison, that just took a comprehensive look at our entire staffing and how we handle it. Because, yes, you know, we, we did have the compression, and we had this, we had that, and we have, it, it just feels piecemeal as opposed to getting a good overall starting point.
Several years, several years ago, we did that. We hired an outside agency to come in and do a salary study on almost every position. And it's been consistently with the same thing that Heather's been producing for the last couple of years. But you have to keep in mind, these are people that we've held back last year. So, so
But that's the piecemeal part of it. And the other thing I'm not comfortable with is not understanding, generally speaking, merit and increases come, you've done additional education relevant to your job. You've done, that you've earned this additional rather than just simply tenure. So I was asked, I wasn't prepared to speak at all. I'm just saying I'm uncomfortable.
Yeah, but some of the educational incentive is, is state-funded. So it's, it's, it was figured in, in the overall total salary package that we have.
It's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about if you go out and complete a course, that you've spent that time. I'm not talking about the cost of the course, that you've actually had the initiative, you've gone out and you've taken, for example, educational courses relevant to your position. That's initiative, that's proactive, and I think that deserves a reward. But I don't know the basis on which we are giving raises. I mean, just generally speaking, so-and-so's done X other than held a, a position for X number of years. And so I'm, I'm not going to argue, I'm not going to do anything else. I'm just saying I'm uncomfortable because I don't understand, you know, what has happened to specifically earn this above the compression, above this, that, and the other. That's, I'm just, there you go.
So I'm gonna, when I, when I look at this on the surface, it's very, it's concerning. When I get into each specific individual and what that situation is, it changes what looks like on the surface. And a great example is, we have a, we're paying less for an Economic Development Director than what Edgewater was, which, you know, just wouldn't pass, that doesn't pass the spell test. So I understand what Commissioner Martin is saying, you know, I don't know, we, we hired the expert, we did it. It kind of seems like we're never getting past the compression problems, the same catch-ups. I'm, I'm not understanding, you know, we've done, we've done the experts, we've done, however, I'm afraid that, you know, when the mayor put this down in front of me, I completely understood what he said. My concern now is, what's next year going to look like? We're going to be in the same spot in the same situation. And Randy did remind me, and I did forget, that there were employees that we passed the buck on to next year, which is today. So I'm more inclined to move forward with these increases with the understanding that there's a little bit of frustration on how we never seem to be getting where we need to be. And then, it's almost like, you know, when we're doing capital expenditures, why is a fire truck so difficult to purchase when we need two or three? How are we not budgeting, you know, what is the fundamental flaw in the way we're doing? And I can, and I can tell you, part of that is the politics of us sitting up here. So I'm, I'm not blaming you guys. We have to change the system. And when we get into our budgets, we can't be gun shy about what, and we've talked about this for years up on the commission, budgeting properly for capital projects and capital items like fire trucks and, and big, big-ticket items. And we always seem gun shy on making that, making the move on spending the money. So, and then we get back into a situation like this. So it's a tough one. But I, I will tell you that it makes no sense that I, we're going to pay a Economic Development Director less than what Edgewater pays.
I hear you. So let me see if I can, I can help. I, I advocate for getting this right, but not instant putting, not doing it over a single calendar year. I think it's not a best practice to give single double-digit raises in a single year, whether I was in any, any industry or in government, double-digit raises weren't done. And so to that end, it's a year out. And so if you make the, you know, if we, if we agree to say this will happen over two years or three years, then I think it is, I think it's palatable for us and would be palatable for each of them. They miss out on, these are 15 and $20,000 raises. These are not $2,000 raises. These are significant raises, 15 to $20,000 a pop. So where I am is, it's going to take you two years, and you will, you will indeed get half of it this year and another half next year. That's where, that's where I was. So to that end, I make a motion that any, any of these proposals that are over the 8%, and in other words, 10% or higher, are stair stepped over two years. That's my motion.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely. A motion, if we second it, we can keep talking. If we can't, it just dies and goes away.
Second for discussion.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Well, sort of an interesting point, let's say the 10% one. So if you gave it 5% now, then next year, would that 5% be calculated on the 105% of this year?
Whatever the right math is, whatever the proper math is.
But you understand why I'm asking. Yeah. Yeah.
So the issue I, the issue is, and I understand what you're saying, but that's what we did last year.
We gave them nothing.
Well, we told them we would space it out to the following year. We waited until next year.
Wait till next year. But we're not saying that. What I'm saying is, give them half this year and absolutely half next year, plus the annual 3%.
But then next year, you have three union contracts up for renewal. And that costs us two years of budgeting to pay for those improvements. So I can guarantee you with the, with Daytona and the county giving 5 and 7% raises this year. raises this year, and our people are only getting three, we just, we just keep getting further and further.
These aren't three, this is, this is three, this is on top of the three percent, that's where, for my...
The, the three percent would be inclusive of what you're saying.
That's not my intent. My intent was on top of the three percent, give half of this increase.
If I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things. I, I think I have used the exact same terminology as Commissioner Martin in, in terms of piecemeal. And, and I do see, I do see that. There, there is a very apparent pay issue in this organization. There's no question about it. It doesn't take a rocket scientist or genius city manager to figure that out. There's a, there's a pay issue here. And I think that ultimately, we need to do a new classification and pay study. It's been four-plus years since the last one was done. You can't do such a study and then not do anything to follow up on it. So, we need to, we need to evaluate all of our positions, we need to evaluate the salaries, we need to look at the market rates for those comparable positions, and figure out where exactly we need to be. And I've been talking to Ms. Kidd about that study, and we'll plan to bring you something probably in the springtime on that. What we are also missing is any, any sort of merit pay increase for, for our employees. So, over the last few years, we have given some cost of living increases and a few things here and there. So where the cost of living increase moves the pay scale. So, somebody at the bottom of the scale is always at the bottom of the scale, because they're never getting a merit pay increase, they're not getting paid for doing that great quality work or for getting that additional education or whatever it may be that warrants that merit increase. So we need a program that ties and a, a work program, a plan for the employee, their work program, to a thorough evaluation of their progress toward that work plan for that year, and then an appropriate increase in however we set that up. It could be a, a pay plan that says you get a three percent increase if you do excellent and you score fives, or you get one percent if you get three, something to that effect. But we are, we are completely absent such a plan today, which is causing our employees to get further and further behind compared to their counterparts in other organizations that are getting those merit increases. So whilst a three percent pay increase, I promise you, is very welcomed and appreciated by all of the employees. They're trying to put bread on the table, feed their families, buy shoes, all of those kind of things that, that everybody here is doing. But the cost of living has been far beyond three percent over the last several years, and they're, they just seem like they're slipping further and further behind. So that, that's item number one. I, I strongly feel that we need to do that study and figure out where our, our employees should be, and then we'll figure out how we can get them there. And that may take two, three years of budgeting to get us to, to that, to that position. But I think if we, you as a commission, we as a management staff and the employees can see the path forward, that, that, that we'll have success and that'll be good for morale. With respect to, to, to these positions, the former city manager felt very strongly that these in particular needed to be addressed for a variety of individual reasons. I think there's a story behind every, every one of these that we could go into that would suggest that they are in fact warranted increases. Some of them have been postponed, as, as, as you have heard. So we have figured out how to budget this time. I don't think this is the, the, the way to go about this, again, it's piecemeal, we're just addressing a few. I promise you, if we do nothing, you'll have a list twice this long next year that, of, of issues where we're trying to figure out compression and, 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 and what have you. So, I, I would recommend that, that you approve the budget as it is with these increases in it. I, I very much appreciate you, you know, looking at this with such scrutiny, and I think that's expected from, from the public, and, and certainly, you know, warranted on your part to look very closely and ask all of these questions. But I do think, based on what I've been informed, that, that all of these increases, though some of them are quite large, are, are certainly warranted. That's my spiel, sir.
You did a good job representing the team, and I appreciate that. My motion remains, and it's seconded. I advocate again for, you said do nothing, this doesn't, my proposal doesn't do nothing. My proposal is a half step up to where it should be at. Could've done it in three years, maybe two years is the right number. And, so anyway, I just cannot look at the citizens and say we're giving somewhere between seventeen and nineteen percent raises, fifteen, twenty thousand dollar raises in a single year. That's, that was, that was my objection. Not that they don't deserve to eventually be in that band, every one of them are superstars, but instant pudding and getting it up there in one year is a bridge too far from my view in what is good government and the public good. I don't know an organization in government, private or public sector, industry, that does double-digit raises in a year. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Martin?
Yeah, no, I'm uncomfortable.
Okay, so let's, let me, let me restate the motion. The motion is to do, for those double-digit and above, do half this year and half next year.
I didn't even hear the second on that, I'm sorry.
No problem, I just wanna make sure you heard it right.
Yeah, no.
Not inclusive of the three percent, correct? That's outside, not inclusive of the three percent.
Not, not including the three percent, so it's actually more than that after you add the three percent.
All right, Commissioner McGurk?
I knew my name was coming up. No.
Commissioner Hartman?
No.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. The motion fails.
Make a, make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Have a motion to approve Resolution Seventy Twenty Four, which is the final New Smyrna Beach budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Have a motion.
Actually, yeah, let me, let me, let me, let me rescind that motion for a second. Because we have a four-member commission, it raises some particular issues, since we're sitting with a two-two. So I think there's, we're gonna need to come to some kind of, to pass the budget, we need to come to some kind of agreement on what the balance is. So you were at nine and a half, is that what it was when you made your motion? Was it nine and a half roughly?
No.
Is that what it was? So what happens is if, if I make a motion and there's two yes and two no's, it fails, right? Okay, so we don't need to do this all night, let's just come, so I will propose a twelve percent plus, not including the three percent.
So, so we're going back to the, this particular set of...
It's a new motion he's making.
So, so we don't sit here all night and, and, and fail to pass the budget, I'm gonna try to, I, I think we should negotiate on where we could be, what, what makes us all comfortable. I mean, I could simply make a motion to pass the budget as is and see where that goes, or we can try to determine where is a, you know, where, where's the point you guys are willing to, we want a little more than nine and a half, I want more than nine and a half, is what I'm saying, I can't speak for Commissioner Hartman.
I am concerned about piecemeal, period.
Understood, I, I don't disagree with that. But we have to, we have a budget to pass.
I understand that. And I'm, I'm just letting you know.
And if...
I stand.
I get it, I'm, I'm not, and I agree with you on piecemeal. I, I have zero disagreement with you on piecemeal and the problem that we all feel that we have, which the city manager addressed. Question is, how do we pass the budget tonight with this in front of us? And if I propose a, a, a twelve percent instead of the mayor's nine and a half percent, where do, where do people, where's that, how do people feel about that?
I could be in on that, absolutely. And so if you make the motion, I'll second it, and we can discuss and discuss, we can vote and find out.
Make a motion for a twelve percent increase, not including the three percent.
Second.
Go ahead, ask.
Twelve percent, not including the three percent across the board?
Correct.
But what about the people that had the eight percent?
Well, they get it, they get their eight percent.
Plus their yes.
So what this is, yeah, so anybody who has less than twelve percent gets it in full, and anybody above the twelve percent would get that next year.
Okay, I'm hearing the top four people would not get it, because twelve plus three is fifteen, so that takes...
Well, just don't, listen, this sheet does not include the three percent.
Yes, it does.
It does.
No, it's, it does include...
It does include the three percent, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that, I was thinking it was the other way. Okay, so...
So you think I'm gonna be comfortable saying only the top four won't get the increases they're inspecting?
What's the double-digit stuff that bothers you?
Well, fifteen percent, there's fifteen, thirteen, eleven, and ten, those are all double digits, so...
So the two techniques here is, we can agree on a number, or we can say, nope, we're not gonna do anything except for the city manager recommended, which is to approve the budget as written. What Commissioner McGurk's pointing out is if there's, well, I think we just let it roll and, and, and see where it goes.
So hold on a second, let me, before I, before I, I wanna make sure, because I said twelve percent, not including the three percent, so that would go to the fifteen percent, and I'm gonna stick there, I like my motion.
It's a motion to increase the, uh, anyone above eight percent, which is the top six or eight, to, what's the number, twelve percent? Twelve percent inclusive?
No, not including...
Not inclusive of the three percent. So there's another number that goes on top of that. There's a motion for that, I'll second that. Any more discussion, if we're clear on what, what it, what it is?
Yeah, so we're excluding only the top four.
There's no exclusion, those are the people that are gonna be...
Well, they're gonna get up to the fifteen percent raise instead of a nineteen percent raise.
So, okay, and then we'll give them a hundred and four percent functionally next year? Because we're adding that, now we are increasing, we're doing it, for example, if you had a hundred now, and you gave it a hundred and fif, you gave it half the raise and say, taking it to a hundred and fifteen, now next year, when we do the other, say, five or ten percent, that's ten percent on a hundred and fifteen, not on the base where they are now.
Next year, we'll have a salary study to go off of, and everything may change.
Listen...
So it doesn't matter.
My proposal gives up to a fifteen percent increase this year. That's, that's what I'm saying. And, and next, and, and of course, I will hold true, and I will tell you this, here's, here's one of the issues. One of the problems we may run into is understanding the budget, if our, if the values go down, if we get, if the real estate market goes down and we go into a slowdown, the ad valorem tax revenue that comes into the city then reduces, which makes making these numbers next year even harder. And so, as long as everybody understands, if we don't do it this year, we're assuming, as we've ridden a great wave of increases in ad valorem tax revenue, that that's gonna continue. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with telling someone they got a fifteen percent raise instead of, the highest is a nineteen percent. And then next year, we'll make it up, but I'm gonna hold my, I'm gonna give my word to that.
Okay, motion's clear, I have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
No.
Commissioner Martin?
No.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. Okay, so that fails it.
Motion to approve the budget as presented.
A motion to approve the budget and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, who is the seconder?
Me.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
No.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. All right, motion carries. Thank you so much, I appreciate that, that discussion. And city manager, I appreciate your, your insertion there, that was helpful.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So we've just approved a city, New Smyrna Beach city budget for one hundred and thirty-six million, seven, nine hundred and seventy-one, uh, and sixty dollars for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. First readings, ordinance number fifty-two, twenty-four will be the first reading of an ordinance which adopted upon a second reading and public hearing would amend and restate the fire pension benefits. Madam City Attorney, would you read fifty-two, twenty-four first time only, by title only?
Ordinance number fifty-two, twenty-four, an ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach amending and restating the City of New Smyrna Beach firefighters' retirement system, providing for public hearing, providing for severability, providing for conflicting ordinances, and provided for, providing for an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be October eighth, twenty-twenty-four.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, Heather, was this mandated by the actuary, or... Cause I saw the actuary actually...
It wasn't mandated by them, it hasn't been done in many, many, many years, and it was a recommendation by the Pension Board Attorney that we have it codified.
Okay.
And when we had some issues, if you remember, beginning of this year, I believe, we had some issues that we had brought and we talked about, we had talked with also City Clerk Kelly, we had talked about codifying at some point, and the Pension Board went through with that.
Yeah, my only concern is that next year, we're going into negotiations, and maybe some of this is all gonna change, and we'll have to do it all over again, and some of the dates that are in there just seem to me like they didn't even need to have dates, because of before a certain time, when everybody was actually in that same period now, getting the same benefit, why we even had dates in some of that, so it's...
So we tried to fix most of that, if we missed something, I apologize.
My recall of it is that we specifically talked about, I know there was one specific provision where we were like, well, let's just take out the dates altogether, and their attorney wanted to keep it in, because it, they felt like, well, it actually explains that these people would still get it too. So I know some of that, that you're talking about, this is supposed to codify, the last time we did it was in twenty-eleven, I believe, so it's supposed to take all the items and put it into one, and there were items in there that were pulled out, because they would be bargaining items. So this is truly supposed to be what was already adopted, as well as the one-seventy-five, or the two-point-oh security, yeah.
The Secure Act.
Two-point-oh. For what it's worth.
Okay, so we have read it for the first time, the second reading will be conducted on the eighth of October, twenty-twenty-four. All right, there are no, I don't think, City Clerk, we've got any boards?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. And on to the Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Martin?
I am distressed, obviously, by increasing the millage rate on increased valuation, it's a double hit. And I am concerned that we have virtually doubled our budget in under five years. I understand we had a lot of salary catching up to do, but we've also increased our staffing levels by almost fifty percent. And I, I just don't see this as being a sustainable model going forward. So I'm really looking forward to a strategic planning workshop, where I hope we can set priorities and get our budget under control. That's the bad news, the good news is that I'm really excited about the watchtower sculpture at the Watchtower Park. And I do hope others will come forward and be inspired to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, I wish everybody a safe next couple of days, we'll see what the weather will bring us, Mother Nature's sometimes is kind and sometimes she's not, so we'll see what happens, so everybody, please be safe. Saturday is... see what happens, so everybody, please be safe, um Saturday is the first annual, right, public safety pickleball tournament, so, at Pettis Park, so Commissioner McGurk could be out there with his ringer, and we'll see what happens, um so hopefully, it's a good time by all, nobody gets hurt, um the other thing is, we, several months ago, we talked about the nepotism policy, and was gonna get some direction on that, um do you know when that might come before us again, or?
I I don't have a specific date yet, sir, but um I have spoken uh with Director Kidd, and I'll circle back around with her, and uh we'll get a report to you um within a couple of meetings, some probably the last meeting in October, or the first meeting in November.
Yeah, I just know with the new budget year, we'll be in the hiring process, and so we kinda need to have that discussion sooner than later, on where we wanna go with that, um, and I think that was it, so be safe.
Yes, sir, Commissioner McGurk?
Uh, yeah, everybody be safe, I hope, unless this thing turns east, uh I think we're gonna hopefully, for the most part, be in good shape, I think the only concern is whether or not we get a lot of rain and and the flooding issues that we all know so well around the area, um so uh my my heart and prayers go out to uh those who may possibly have to deal with flooding uh in their homes. I wanna talk about that budget in a second, it's a luxury to vote no on the budget and then go through and participate for the next year in the budget, in ru- in the city, we did, we had nine months of this, and today was not the time to get into a deep debate of what, we all agree, we all agree, city manager even agreed, and is gonna work on those issues, but when you don't approve the millage rate and you don't approve the budget, I will be the first one to remind you that you should not have the luxury of then asking for anything to spend money on, it's a, it's it's a, you ride the coattails of the commissioners who voted yes and had to do the hard work, we've had two other commissioners who've made a habit of doing that, and it's um, it's poor etiquette, nine months to bring these issues up, now's not the time, and I threw it out there and I said, what works, give me something, make a motion, that wasn't done, so I'm being, it's 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 not, it's, with all due respect, it is one of those awkward situations where you part, you you voted no on the budget, and if we wanna play that game, we can all sit here twenty-four hours, all day, all night, because the city doesn't get to operate without an approved budget, so it puts, it's a little bit of a unique circumstance, it puts the rest of the commission in, with all due respect, it's an awkward situation to now operate for the next year, and I would be. When you ask to spend money in the budget, I'll remind you that you didn't approve a budget, so you have no money to spend.
Okay, I I admire the civility in our disagreements and our agreements, so I appreciate the fact that we can talk candidly back and forth, and and uh, so I appreciate your opinion, and the lessons that we we all learn, uh, so we'll take that up as the clock ticks. In the meantime, let's celebrate a win, today, we commissioned a uh police marine unit for the first time in New Smyrna Beach's history, and uh it was a seminal day in law enforcement, in ecological protection, in economic advance, and many other facets, led by our our chief, and it's been long in the making, uh Mike Coffin's dream years ago uh is coming true, I'm glad he's still a resident, gets to appreciate that, as will many, many residents who are begging us to take care of uh of our lagoon, and so, this is gonna be no different than every other activity uh that our police department takes on, it's interoperability and cooperation with the county and the state, and the federal uh uh entity, the Coast Guard, and so we are on our way to seeing uh great things in our uh in our town for what's going on on the waterways, so to the chief and to the staff for putting the whole thing together, uh making the budget work out, I am grateful, thank you very, very much, and we all got to attend that today, and it was a great celebration. Uh, Mr. City Manager, delighted that you're here to uh hopefully get just a brush of what a hurricane looks like, God willing, and uh you have responded uh with your team marvelously, uh Mr. Ray, David, Director Ray, uh what you did to go out and reassure the citizens that all your equipment is up and running and working, and you've done uh a yeoman's job of making sure everything that we have is out there and available is commendable, I know the fire department is ready for rescue, the police department is ready for rescue, we will be uh, we will be out there and and watching as Thursday events occur to keep our town safe and sound, uh with that, uh I'm done with my remarks, Madam City Clerk, have you got anything to say?
No report, thank you.
Okay, Madam City Attorney?
Um, yes, the remainder of this week, uh weather permitting, I'm gonna be in Orlando for the uh International Municipal Lawyers Association Annual Conference, um and then I know I shared this with one of you, but uh for the rest of you, I have been appointed to the Florida Municipal Attorneys Association Steering Committee, um so that's an honor that I'm um happy to accept.
Congratulations, that's awesome, thank you very much, please go no farther west than Orlando, we want you back, Mr. City Manager?
Uh, yes, sir, just an announcement, I am now Florida official, I have uh driver's license and car tags and voter registration, so happy to be a Florida resident, and just a quick shout-out to the employees of the county over there in Deland, they gave me great service, they took care of everything, so shout-out, thank you, sir.
Perfect, we're delighted you're here, the police chief will take note of that, and we'll make sure that the officers are all loaded up and ready for you.
If you need help with who to vote for.
My wife has that taken care of, I promise you.
Saying no other business, we're adjourned.